Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Pursuant to applicable law in my determination that some attendance by remote means is necessary because fully in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to the declared public health disaster caused by COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted both in person and by video conference. We will now have a roll call vote to establish quorum. Please note that your yes or present response will be deemed a yes when this quorum call is used as a reference vote for later items. And for the aldermen that are on the computer, please make sure your microphones are unmuted as the clerk calls the roll. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Alderman Spada.
Present.
Alderman Hopkins.
Present, remote.
Alderman Dow.
Here.
Alderman King.
Present.
Alderman Hairston.
Present.
Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Sawyer. Alderman Mitchell.
Present.
Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Beal.
In the flesh.
Alderman Zelowski-Garza.
I'm here as well.
Alderman Thompson.
Present.
Alderman Cardness.
Present.
Alderman Quinn.
Here.
Alderman Burke.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Coleman.
And the notes bleed here.
Alderman Moore.
Back of the bus.
Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis. Alderman O'Shea.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Brookins.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Here.
Alderman Tabarez.
Here.
Alderman Scott.
Present.
Alderman Sichu Lopez. Alderman Molinato.
Here.
Alderman Burnett.
Here.
Alderman Irvin.
Here.
Alderman Talafaro.
Here.
Alderman Reboyas.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cardona.
Here.
Alderman Waggits Pack.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez. Alderman Austin.
Blessed to be here.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Present.
Alderman Viegas.
Present.
Alderman Mitz.
Present.
Alderman Spazado.
Present.
Was here.
Alderman Nugent. Alderman Vascas.
Present.
Alderman Napolitano.
Present.
Alderman Riley.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Tunney.
Here.
Alderman Gardner.
Present.
Alderman Kappelman.
Present.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Osterman. Alderman Haddon.
Present.
Alderman Silverstein.
Present.
Your Honor, we have a quorum present.
Sawyer's here.
Alderman Sawyer is here. We have 49 members present.
There are 49 members present. We have a quorum. Ladies and gentlemen, please rise as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in liberty, in liberty and justice for all. Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing as we have the invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Nathan Payne of Park Community Church.
Let us pray. Thank you so much for this opportunity to pray. Our God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for a new day that we are here in this body. Thank you for this body of leaders whom you have appointed to oversee and to serve this city of Chicago. We are thankful for each of the people of the city of Chicago. We thank you that you've seen us through a year of trial and challenge and that you have sustained us and continue to do so. We acknowledge our dependence upon you for strength and wisdom to lead that all in this city would dwell in peace and blessing. And so we ask you, Father God, for your wisdom to be bestowed upon each of these, your servants. We pray that your prevailing peace, your shalom and wholeness and blessing to be upon this city from its north to its south, from the east to the west. Continue to sustain us, grant us your blessings, that each decision made in this body today would lead to the flourishing of this city and all of its people. We pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, you may be seated. The chair recognizes Chairman Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I move to suspend the rule so that we can pass the omnibus from the meeting on May 26, 2021. Near the end of the meeting, things got a little exciting and members of the council were a little distracted and the omnibus was overlooked.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Now I move the matters on the omnibus from May 26, 2021, be passed by an affirmative vote of all members present for the roll call to determine quorum.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Thompson on the motion for reconsideration.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion reconsidered the last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The motion for reconsideration fails, so ordered.
Regular order of business.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Ladies and gentlemen, public comment. The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. Our first speaker today is Minister Eric Sexton.
Testing, one, two. Okay, there we go. Thank you. All right. Good morning. I'm Minister Eric Sexton, and thank you for this opportunity to address the mayor of our city of Chicago and also all of our legislators that are assembled here. I was watching the news yesterday, and I'm here on behalf of the renaming of Lake Shore Drive to Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabo Drive. And I saw the newscast that said, "A compromise, a compromise, a compromise." You know, compromise is good in certain instances, but not in all instances. And in this instance, it's not a good thing to do. Our human spirit does not want to compromise personally when we do things. So we have to understand that compromise is not always good. So compromise means to accept standards that are lower than desirable. We don't expect that for our own lives. So what that says is our system of governing is flawed and most of the time is couched in discrimination. We have accepted standards that are lower than desirable. The standards we should all strive to accept is what is best, what is right, and what is honorable. I don't know if anyone assembled here is a believer of the Word of God. This country was founded on biblical principles, and we have stated, "In God we trust, and so help me God." Those statements are what's best, what is right, and what is honorable. This states that He is the same. The Word of God states that He is the same yesterday, today, and forever. God states that what is right and true, because He has created us and started everything in motion, including all of us. The greatest challenges we face in our nation and city is that we stray so far from this standard and have chosen to govern ourselves apart from it. The best that we could come up with is to compromise. This decision to rename the iconic Lake Shore Drive to the iconic Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabo Drive is what is best, right, and what is honorable, because Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabo is regarded as the first permanent non-indigenous settler of what would later become Chicago, Illinois, and is recognized as the founder of Chicago. Pointe du Sabo is first recorded as living at the mouth of Chicago River in a traders' journal as early as 1790. By then, he established an extensive and prosperous trading settlement in what later became the city of Chicago. He sold his Chicago River property in 1800 and moved to the port of St. Charles, where he was licensed to run a ferry across the Missouri River. Pointe du Sabo's success and role in developing the Chicago River settlement was recognized a little in the mid-1920s. Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabo had to realize, why is this honorable, right, and just? Because guess what? He came before there was a Lake Shore Drive. He came before there was a State Street. He came before there was a magnificent mile. He came before there was a Sears Tower and a soldiers' field. My prayers that this great city legislators assembled here was tried to make what is right our standard and watch as we.
Minister Sexton, thank you very much for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Mr. George Lake-Moore.
Institutional racism, systemic racism is alive here, here in this chamber, the democratic machine. Who does it work for? Do one of these birds. It doesn't work for the black community, our legal citizens. I'm outraged to hear somebody want a sanctuary city. Illegal mean against the law, and you bringing illegals in and putting them ahead of enslaved people and American black people. There's something wrong here. And all you old whatever, black ones, you're silent on this. Somebody told me, Mr. Lake-Moore, don't bring up illegal immigrants. Illegal mean against the law. In a few minutes, it gonna kick out, and that young man gonna say, "Your time is up." We have a law here. You have no law when it comes to black people. You got all these contracts. Mr. Lake-Moore, cool off. These dispensaries, white folks selling legal drugs. How many blacks have dispensary? Not one, not one. Something is wrong here. And our black leadership, the so-called leadership, is silent. Now you trying to take one of these, our aldermen away, because you got these illegals coming in and you counting them as legal. And you're silent, you old black alderman, you're silent. Something is very wrong here. Institutional racism is alive in Wales, in the city of Chicago. You know what you can do to that old constitution? Use it as toilet paper. When it comes to black people, there's no justice, there's no peace. I'm outraged, I'm tired of, we should overcome one day. When are we gonna overcome it, black people? Economic development in our neighborhoods, economic equity in our neighborhoods, racism, institutional racism, systemic racism, it's something stink here. And what stink here, Mr. Lake-Moore, is silent. Our black leadership is silent. You see that little tongue? It's still power in the spoken word. They killed Jesus Christ, Malcolm X, like the king of what this little tongue. I'ma use it to free my people, to empower my people, and we could get our contract goods and service. Now cut me out.
Mr. Lake-Moore, thank you for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Sarah Youssef.
Can you all hear me? Yeah, okay. Good morning. My name is Sarah Youssef, and I'm with the ECPS Coalition and Community Renewal Society. I, along with countless others, have been working on civilian oversight for several years now. And I don't do it because it's right, though it is. And I don't do it because it's just, though it is. I do it because of hope, hope that by giving communities a say in policing, all of us together can create a safer Chicago. Because for too long, we have relied on the police to solve our problems. Yet, public safety is a matter that all of us in this city must have a say in. And by passing ECPS, we're giving our communities the opportunity to co-create with police effective policies that will bring the city peace. We can only do this together. I ask that you, city council, as representative of our communities, stand with us and vote for this ordinance, the ECPS ordinance. We demand that we have a Public Safety Committee meeting and a hearing on this ordinance for this great city and all the people who are, who call this city home. We need this now. Let's reimagine what safety looks like, and let's begin by passing ECPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Youssef, for your comments. Our next speaker is Glenn Duval.
Greetings, honorable council members and the Honorable Mayor Lori Lightfoot. My name is Glenn Duval Petway, known internationally as simply Duval. I'm 59 years old, born and raised in Chicago's Inglewood. I'm a fashion designer and custom suitmaker, and of course, I welcome any help you guys have at yourduval.com. My client's list is from Nelson Mandela to Patty LaBelle. Today, I stand here before you on the shoulders of so many like myself, the everyday people on the ground, the people who voted and campaigned to put you into these offices, only to see some of you guys get here and act like some kind of mafia bosses that can't get along with each other. I'm here to tell you that only you can turn Chicago around. You can start by publicly respecting each other and at least appear to support each other's agenda. And why? Because all the crime that you see, the fighting and sabotaging, backstabbing, the assaults, beatings, hijackings, robberies, hate crimes that you see on the streets are merely an exaggerated mirrored reflection of what goes on right here in these very rooms here in City Hall. And by the time it trickles down to the ground, it is blown out of proportion times 10, and now unimaginable and imaginable nightmare. Respecting each other publicly was my first point. Secondly, I'd like to comment on the renaming of Lake Shore Drive. If you can't meet all the way, at least have a Plan B in action. Maybe from Madison Street to Evanston, it can continue to be North Lake Shore Drive. And maybe from Madison Street to the Obama Center, it could be South Du Sabo Drive. It's not hard for us to work together and to figure out how to make it happen. And from that Madison Street, you make that South Drive an experience with statues, artwork, and we also pay homage to the Indian tribes that were reflected. In closing, in the spirit of Du Sabo, we say to the remaining, to the renaming of South African, I'm sorry. In closing, in the spirit of Du Sabo, we say yes to the renaming of South Du Sabo Drive, the Riverwalk, to the statues to be erected in his honor at the near North Side Park that the mayor tossed in to sweeten the deal. Du Sabo was not only the founder, he was the very first black man to be accosted and jailed for literally 10 years for being a black success. Chicago, we can do it. We can pay homage to this man. Why not? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duval, for your comments. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Patino.
My name is Elizabeth Patino. I'm here from the 48th Ward, and I'm a member of the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression. I'm here to voice my support for the ECPS ordinance and the referendum for police accountability and to voice my disappointment in the spectacle we saw at last week's Public Safety Committee meeting. It's apparent some aldermen don't support a true democratic process as they continue to block a vote on the ECPS ordinance despite the demands of their constituents and the city at large. To be clear, standing in the way of passing ECPS and the subsequent referendum is an attempt to uphold a racist, classist, ableist, and sexist system of policing in Chicago, and your constituents know it and will remember come next election cycle. You alderfolk have the opportunity to make history passing the ECPS ordinance and the referendum. I implore all their people, Talia Faro, Spazado, Tunney, Silverstein, and Kappelman, and other aldermen standing in the way of progress, to dig deep and look internally. How can you sleep at night, knowing full well CPD is assaulting and murdering citizens? There are and will be more Trina Townsons, who was sexually assaulted for years by an officer who is now retired collecting a pension. There will be more Gerald Reeds, who was tortured into confessing to a crime he did not commit and who the governor recently commuted his sentence for after decades of imprisonment. There will be more Adam Toledo's, Rekia Boyd's, and Laquan McDonald's until we get true police accountability. Pass ECPS now and pass the subsequent referendum.
Thank you, Ms. Patino, for your comments. Our next speaker is Efrain Martin.
To the Honorable Mayor Lightfoot and members of the city council, good morning. I am Efrain Martin, chairman for the Black Heroes Matter and Martins International. First, we want to express thanks to President Biden, U.S. senators, Congress, and the state officials for officially making Juneteenth a federal and state holiday after 156 years out of captivity and 242 years after Chicago was founded by a free black man, Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabo. Today, the Black Heroes Matter is requesting all council members to do the right thing. Vote yes on Alderman and Moore and King's ordinance to rename the Outer Lake Shore Drive as the Sabo Drive. Because of the urgency of the Sabo Drive, Martins International has postponed our July 4th weekend African Caribbean festival to be combined with the JSV festival September 11th and 12th. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Where God builds a church, the devil builds a castle." And our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. The Sabo Drive matters. Mayor Lightfoot, you recently said what has been given to the Sabo so far is a joke, and yet you're right. But there's that small and rich minority who are not yet ready to accept change, especially driving on a street with the name of the Sabo, a black man in their neighborhood. So they told you the name the Sabo is not marketable, but please do not believe, as that is just part of what is called cisinstitutional racism. A recent poll by Alderman Hopkins and Independent, and an independent poll by WGN News showed a whopping 98% of blacks and a minority of Chicagoans of all persuasion have no problem with the renaming of LSD to the Sabo Drive. According to you, Mayor Lightfoot, when you say Lake Shore Drive, people know you're talking about Chicago, and you think that is very important. But that is where the problem lies, which must be corrected. Had it not been for racism, it would be different. It would instead be wherever you go, when you say the Sabo, everyone would know you're talking about Chicago. But the Sabo was denied its right of recognition, and the black founder was locked into prison of discrimination. What is now called Lake Shore Drive has gone through several renames since the last 100 years. But each time the Sabo was mentioned, it was denied, which runs, it was denied on the street which runs north and south under the location where it started, Chicago. Today, after the Sabo Drive is officially named, your proposed $40 million for other Du Sabo projects can start with the 25-foot monument, the longer wait to Du Sabo Park, the city holiday.
And thank you for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Justice Reverend Shelvin Hall.
Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. Margaret Mead, to our Honorable Mayor Lightfoot and each member of this distinguished city council, I am retired Illinois appellate court justice Shelvin Louise Marie Hall, having served 30 years on the judiciary. I'm chair and here in that capacity only of the political committee of the Black Heroes Matter Coalition. We have spent more than a year coming before the various committees of this council, encouraging each of you to bring about a worthy change and rename Outer Lake Shore Drive to Du Sabo Drive for the founding father of this great city who has gone under-recognized for almost two and a half centuries, Jean Baptiste Pointe du Sabo. Today is the day that you, that small group of committed citizens, can give honor where honor is due. We have heard all of the contrary arguments in the past months that Du Sabo already has enough monuments. Well, let a tiny bust hit and recess from the street by tying a corse, a shuttered high school, a barely seen sign on the side of a bridge, a wonderful but woefully underfunded museum that proudly carries his name. We say that Du Sabo himself built more in his time. 240 years ago, Du Sabo built a trading post, a farm, a mill, a bakehouse, a smokehouse, a stable, a barn, and a beautiful home with mirrors and paintings, and all we're asking for is a street with his name on it costing around $840,000. How can we continue to be, do less for Du Sabo than Du Sabo did for us? The very existence of Du Sabo Drive, bridging the north and south sides of Chicago, inviting the West to visit the East, is reflective of the life of this great man who traded with all people, the English, the French, the Patriots, and the indigenous people, one of whom became his wife. Once again, Du Sabo would serve as the focal point for the city, the beautiful crown at the helm of this much heralded city of Chicago. We have read the false argument repeated to the citizens of the North Side, their tactics saying the drive will make them change their addresses when Alderman Moore made sure that residential addresses would not be affected. We've heard the barely masked systemic racism arguing that naming the drive after a black man would reduce the marketability of the city with no proof. What is more pleasant and illiterative than Du Sabo Drive? We're delighted that the mayor has joined in seeing the value of this recognition and wants to, in the future, create other honors costing upwards of $40 million, but not one of these future honors is a simple street.
Thank you, Justice Reverend Hall, for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Ryan O'Donnell. Mr. O'Donnell, are you there?
Please press star six to unmute.
Sorry, I didn't realize you all could not hear me. Good morning, city council. My name is Ryan O'Donnell. After receiving a ticket for expired registration on May 14, 2021, my car was booted on May 18, 2021, and seized and impounded around 3:00 a.m. on May 19, 2021. This is just one of so many stories of Chicagoans who have suffered the economic injustice, the punitive system meant to extract revenue at the cost, justice, financial security for the poor and middle class, and the Fourth Amendment U.S. constitutional right to be free from unreasonable seizure of property. For years, Chicagoans have sought drastic reform of the ticketing, booting, towing, and appeals process and the policies and practices of the Department of Finance. The way that Chicago preys on people for revenue through predatory ticketing, booting, and seizing of vehicles has ruined thousands of lives. It has cost people their livelihoods, thrown them into bankruptcy, and taken away their ability to reasonably own any vehicle. As Mayor Lightfoot said before she became mayor, this sort of punitive policy is wrong and counterproductive, as it makes it harder for the people to earn a paycheck if their car is booted or sold. Despite campaign promises to resolve these issues and ban the boot, Mayor Lightfoot has made only minor and often temporary improvements that are more like charity and PR stunt than equity. It pains me to say that if we wait for Mayor Lightfoot to fix this issue, we will be waiting forever. Therefore, Band-Aid Chicago calls upon each of you as members of city council to use the power that you have to fix this deeply wrong, predatory, inefficient system of the city immobilizing, seizing, and selling or destroying the private property of Chicago. Band-Aid Chicago is calling on each of you to work with us to introduce an ordinance that does all of the following. One, puts an immediate end to the doubling and tripling of tickets. Two, puts an immediate end to the booting of privately owned vehicles. Three, puts an immediate end to the seizure of privately owned vehicles, not including temporary relocation for emergencies. And four... And four, orders the immediate and unconditional return of all seized vehicles. None of these, none of these demands will in any way deter public safety. This does not stop in any way the suspension of licenses. This does not stop the multitude of ways that the Department of Finance already has.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, for your comments. However, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Sam Toya.
Good morning. I'm Sam Toya, president and CEO of the Illinois Restaurant Association. The restaurant and hospitality industry in Chicago has been devastated by the pandemic over the last 16 months. Business, team members, and the public have buckled down, stayed safe, gotten vaccinated, and now, thanks to our collective efforts, we are on a path to recovery. However, it's going to be a long, tough road ahead. Thousands of Chicago restaurants are struggling to find viable ways to fully reopen, attract talent, pay their debts, make rent, instill customer confidence, keep up with rising food costs, and adjust to the new normal. The Shy Biz Strong package under consideration today will immediately help small businesses reopen and recover. It includes crucial reforms that support restaurants, bars, caterers, and hospitality businesses throughout our 77 communities. Targeted grants, streamlined permits and licensing, allowing A-frame signage, assuring reasonable delivery fees, and more will be hugely beneficial to neighborhood restaurants as they welcome diners and team members back. Throughout the past year and a half, the mayor and the city council stuffed up to cut red tape, speed up processes for small businesses, and give more people a chance to succeed when things were the most dire during COVID-19. Many of the provisions in this package were successful measures adopted during the pandemic. We are happy for these reforms to become permanent. We want to thank Mayor Lightfoot, the members of the City Council, and Commissioner Escarino for their ongoing support. This relief package recognizes the ongoing challenges facing small businesses by taking action to strengthen our economy. I ask for your full support and look forward to working with all of you to revive Chicago's renowned hospitality industry. As we all know, we are the culinary capital of the United States. We want to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Toya, for your comments. Our next speaker is Daniela Pereira.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Daniela Pereira, and I'm the Vice President of Community Conservation at Openlands. I have over 20 years' experience as a forester, and today I not only represent Openlands staff and board, but also thousands of our advocates and treekeepers. We support the amendment to create an Urban Forestry Advisory Board. We look forward to joining cities like Milwaukee, Portland, Minneapolis, Atlanta, and many others that have established successful tree boards. The state of Illinois receives funding through National Urban and Community Forestry Grants with the primary goal of establishing these boards. Having the Urban Forestry Advisory Board will increase funding for Illinois and increase opportunities for funding for Chicago. It's an easy win. Since 2010, a net average of 10,000 street trees have been removed every year. Imagine that a city block has about 15 trees on both sides of the street. The equivalent of removing 10,000 street trees a year is like cutting down all the trees on Western Avenue from Howard Street in Rogers Park, south for 20 miles to 95th Street in Beverly, and then coming back up Tedsey for 20 more miles. This is what happens every year in Chicago, at least for the last decade. The lack of importance in the urban forest has led us to the current situation where there are too few policies in place for preservation and protection, limited funding for planting and sustained care of trees, a workforce shortage of trained arborists, and too few people who know of trees' benefits. Aldermen often mention that they get more complaints than compliments about trees. My experience is the reverse. I get weekly calls complaining about healthy trees being removed, trees that are improperly mulched or pruned, trees under warranty that are dead, 3-1-1 calls closed out without any work completed, or year-round Christmas lights or tree grates literally choking and killing them. Instead of responding in a piecemeal fashion, the board will be the place to share and coordinate best practices and the latest data and science about trees while also dispelling myths. Chicago faces urgent challenges with severe storms, air pollution, flooding, and excessive heat. But with a robust urban forest, we can create one of the strongest strategies to curb the effects of climate change in the most accessible way we can create connections to nature and the outdoors. Please pass this important ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pereira, for your comments. Our final speaker is Mr. Elliot Richardson.
Hello. Thank you so much for this opportunity, Mayor Lightfoot and the honorable members of the City Council. I am speaking here on behalf of Shy Biz Strong. This is an exciting day for Chicago's small business community. You are on the verge of passing an ordinance which will cut red tape for small businesses and help local communities recover from the pandemic. My name is Elliot Richardson. I am the co-founder and president of the Small Business Advocacy Council. We are laser-focused on advocating for small businesses and local entrepreneurs, and there has never been a more important time to advocate for small businesses and local neighborhoods than right now. The pandemic closed many businesses and devastated others. We know it's impacted commercial corridors and neighborhoods in your wards, and we know we're not out of the woods yet. We are asking for your vote on Shy Biz Strong because it will help small businesses and local communities across the city recover from the pandemic. Just some of the reasons the small business community is so passionate about Shy Biz Strong, the ordinance will reduce the time it takes for a small business to display a sign and obtain a publicway use permit. It will allow businesses to announce to the public and potential patrons they are open for business more quickly. It's going to let them hit the ground running. It's going to generate local commerce in local communities, and that is critical as Chicago neighborhoods fight to recover from the pandemic. Shy Biz Strong legalizes A-frame signs so businesses can bring back their customers, recover, and grow. That daily special highlighted on that small sign can mean a new customer for a local business, and that's going to make a huge difference in local communities. Shy Biz Strong makes it easier for restaurants to open. Essentially, it cuts red tape. It helps small business and local communities in many extremely meaningful ways. This is a crucial time for small businesses, and we're asking each of you to stand with the small business community and pass Shy Biz Strong. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson, for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
I thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Chairman Dow of the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend the rules to go out of the regular order of business to consider an item at this time. The Committee on the Budget and Government Operations held a meeting on June 16th and recommends approval of the appointment of Celia Mesa as Corporation Counsel of the Department of Law. I will yield the floor to members who may want to speak on this appointment. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm proud to join this resolution and congratulating Celia Mesa. A few notables about Celia. Went to high school in Palatine. She's the daughter of migrant farmers. She was a law clerk to Justice Alan Page. A lot of us remember Alan Page as a former bear, Chicago bear, and one that also that his city and state proud that went to the Minnesota Supreme Court. Celia comes from having phenomenal experience in government and ethics, which obviously we badly need in today's age. Thank you, Celia, for taking on this role. And obviously, she's a graduate of University of Illinois and also University of Iowa College of Law, a double on the Big Ten scale, so thank you for that. Proud moment to not just Latinos, but I think everybody in this city that's looking for a new generation of leadership, someone who's grounded in doing the right thing by her family, her city, and her country, and the people that she's representing here today. So congratulations on the appointment. We're part of you, and we're standing behind you 100%. Thank you.
I thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, colleagues. In light of everything going on with Ms. Angelique Young, Alderman Taylor and I move to defer and publish this item. Thank you.
Alderman Vegas.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd ask my colleague to reconsider that motion, and let's take a look at working forward to, I just, this is, I think we should reconsider that motion, too.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
According to our rules, motion to defer and publish is not debatable. Two members have called it. We must proceed.
Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Latino members of this body, I really would urge my dear friend Alderman of the 15th Ward to reconsider his motion. This is a very, very important nomination, an appointment that will have significant impact in our community, being the first Corporation Counsel of Latino origin. So I implore my fellow member to reconsider his motion, and you always have the right to vote against the nominee. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. And you're absolutely right. It is non-debatable, but I'm like my Latino colleagues that I think this sets a precedent that shouldn't be. We should allow this individual to be seated, for she's the Corporation Counsel for all of us, not just in one position. This is something that should never take place. Yes, it's not debatable, but I'm like your colleague members, you should withdraw this motion.
Chair recognizes Alderman Taylor. Can you please turn on Alderman Taylor's microphone?
And so, when do we stop playing the game of mistreating people in our community? So this ain't about that. And so, I second Alderman Lopez. I'm not changing it.
Chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Yeah, I just want to say that this issue, I know that Alderman Taylor did not attend the meeting. Alderman Lopez, I believe you were there. This issue never came up. This was not a topic of discussion, and I just want to lay that out here. This looks like the last-minute drive-by.
Other members. Alderman, the Chair recognizes Alderman Rabellos.
Madam President, as I look at my colleague, I, too, would respectfully ask to defer this matter that you just brought up, because I believe that we need that young lady that's well-qualified to sit in a seat that's vacant right now. We need to do some work in the city of Chicago, and we can't do it if we don't have the head of the Corporation Counsel with us. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other members that wish to be heard? Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I respect my colleague's decision. I'm not going to ask him to change, but with that, I motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene on Friday at 11 o'clock.
Is there a second? Your motion is to recess?
To recess, I'm sorry.
All right. Roll call. Roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Laspada.
No.
No, sir. The roll call is starting. We will have the, no, sir. No, sir. We will have the roll call. I do not believe that that is correct. I do not believe that that's correct, sir. I'm ruling you out of order. A roll call vote is starting. Rule 20, I would like to correct you, sir. Rule 21, Rule 21 says that we can adjourn, adjourn to a date certain, take a recess, or so forth. So Rule 21 allows for the motion that Alderman Spazato has put. Counsel will stand at ease for five minutes. The Chair recognizes Chairman Talia Farrell, Public Safety.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the City Council, reporting for your committee on public safety for which a meeting was held on June 18, 2021. There was one item, Madam President, before the committee for which a vote were taken. A vote was taken. Item number one was A2021-60, the appointment of Annette Nance-Holt as Commissioner of the Chicago Fire Department. Pardon me, Madam President. Madam President, asking for the temporary suspension of the rules to report out as committee on public.
We were in the middle of a roll call vote.
Please, please don't yell out, folks. There's a motion for to suspend the rules to take up the nomination of Annette Holt. The roll call was suspended. As you recall, we went into recess. There's a motion to suspend the rules to take up the nomination of Annette Holt. Hearing no objections, so ordered. Please proceed, Chairman Talia.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, members of the City Council, reporting for your committee on public safety for which a meeting was held on June 18, 2021. There was one item before the committee for which a vote was taken. Item number one was A2021-60, the appointment of Annette Nance-Holt as Commissioner of the Chicago Fire Department. This item was recommended due passage by the committee. If there is no objection, I move for the passing of this item by roll call vote.
Are there members who wish to speak, too? Chair recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. Annette, Michelle, can you back up a little bit just so I can see her? No, no problem. I just want to see her and I congratulate her. Just want to say congratulations, Annette. I talked to you shortly after you were nominated, and once again, I will tell you, if you need me for anything, feel free to call me. I know, you know, we have an issue here with the city and some pay, but I'm more than willing to help out and help you do anything you need to do to succeed. So, once again, congratulations. God bless you and the Fire Department. God bless you and the Fire Department. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Spazado, the Chairman, I recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. As to rise and say that, how grateful we are for this nomination. I have been with Annette from when she first started, under my husband, and now to have you as our Commissioner of Fire Department, that's a long way to come from your dedicated, hard work. But let me pause right here and welcome our 2nd Congressional District Congresswoman, Robin Kelly. Thank you so much, Congresswoman, for being here with our sister on this auspicious occasion. Listen to that. We can write that down now, Annette. It is just such an honor to be able to stand before you all for a person such as Annette, who have came up through the ranks. Nobody gave her anything. She worked hard with dedication to arrive to where she's at now. Madam Mayor, we want to thank you for this appointment of Annette Nance-Holt, Blair's mother. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. As we've already honored our Congresswoman, I want to honor my state Senator, Jackie Collins, of the 16th Legislative District. Please stand, who's here. As well as one of the prolific and major fighters in this city against injustices and equities, the Bishop of my ward, Bishop, Father Michael Flager, please stand. And I thank you all so much for being here. I cannot remember your name. What's your name again? That is our running joke. She always say, "I never remember her when I see her." But that's, her work and her ethic as Chairman, Austin has talked about, is to me unmatched. And although we always don't agree on everything in the City Council, I think we can agree that this appointment is an appointment that's well-deserved, and I appreciate you. I want you just to continue the work that you've done, that you've been doing, and continue to make a difference in our community. You definitely have our full support. Thank you so much.
Moore, the Chair recognizes Alderman Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise to support this nomination. You know, I'm so happy and so proud, because I know the work that you're going to do for our communities. You know, we've had several conversations about how you see the Fire Department and how you want to move them forward, and it just excites me, because I know that we're going to bring more African-Americans into the fold. We're going to bring more women into the fold. We're going to make sure that the thing that is great about the Fire Department, and everybody can call and they know that they're going to get service, we're going to continue to do that under your leadership. And I am so happy and so proud to be able to work with you, and also Tracy told me to tell you, congratulations. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Scott. The Chair recognizes Alderman Nitz.
Thank you, Madam President. I too like to rise to congratulate Annette, and also to let her know that your legacy have already been written. You do what you do because you love doing it, and you do it with grace, respect, and honor. So with that, it's just a matter of keep doing what you're doing, keep in your eyes where it's always been, and even more so now than ever. I just want to commend you and know that you're going to do great work, and I'm so proud, because we have our first history-making moment today, celebrating women's power. Black women, power. That's an honor, because it's a struggle, we know, as a black woman. Just not the race, we got another one to deal with, being a woman. So I want to congratulate you on behalf of the 37th Ward. Wish you well, and we're there to support our Fire Department in any way, and trying to make it a better place in this city of Chicago. Thank you.
Nitz, the Chair recognizes Alderman Garza.
President, I too rise in support of this appointment. Commissioner Holt, this is one of the best appointments that I've seen yet in the six years I've been here. I couldn't be more proud of you. I know your kindness. I know your work ethic, but most of all, I know your passion for the city of Chicago. I'm glad to be working alongside you, and anything that you need from the 10th Ward, we're there to support you, hook, line, and sinker. And I have to give a shout-out to the illustrious, beautiful, amazing Congresswoman Kelly, my Congresswoman. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Garza. The Chair recognizes Alderman Vegas.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to stand and support this appointment, history in the making. I like the message that's being conveyed by the Commissioner about breaking ceilings, making sure that her Cabinet is diverse, making sure that people that have historically not participated in management positions are going to be there. So I'm looking forward to working with you to make sure that all our communities, especially the Latino community, is part of this. Right now, there's a little bit of a void, but I think I want, we're going to work together to make sure that that management team is reflective of the city of Chicago, make sure there's some parity. I also want to say hi to the Congresswoman as well, as well as the state Senator, and also Father Flager. You brought the heavies in today to get this confirmation, and I can tell you that we were going to support you, because this was a great appointment, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, the Chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I too want to rise in support of this appointment. I am so happy to be able to call you Commissioner Annette. It rolls off my tongue easily. I know how you care about the Fire Department. I know your passion for the department. I know you're someone who came up from the ranks, and so you know the ins and outs, and I'm very much looking forward to working with you as you take this seat officially. I also want to acknowledge Congressman Kelly, and also Senator Collins, and Father Flager. Good to see you. God bless everyone.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderman Austin.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to rise to commend the Commissioner and congratulate her. We got to meet each other years ago after the death of your son, working on gun control legislation with the Congressman, the Senator, Father Flager, and others. Your perseverance in the way you've risen in the ranks in the Fire Department is a great testament to who you are as a person. The Fire Department, the men and women of the Fire Department have gotten our city through the last 18 months of this COVID crisis, and you, as a leader in that department, have helped guide our city and guide that department to a safer day today. All of us here rise to support you. Whatever you need from us as the Fire Department moves forward to be a more diverse workforce, but also make sure that every single day, 24 hours a day, you bring safety to the city. So we're committed to helping you out. I just want to wish you Godspeed. Today, you're also a unifier, and I think that we could follow your example in how to unify people, and we may ask you to stick around the meeting a little bit longer to help guide us through. If you could do that today, it would be a great first day. So God bless.
Thank you, Alderman Austin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Madam President, I too rise to support this resolution. Our 15 years, or 16 now, of watching you grow and develop, I am so proud of you. You are an awesome leader. You will be fair. You'll be compassionate, and you will be awesome as the leader of the Chicago Fire Department. So today, I say Godspeed to you, and that I can't wait for you to be stepping in those shoes officially. I want to say a big shout-out to my Congresswoman, Congressman Kelly, and to my new Senator, who will be representing the north end of my ward, Senator Collins. Welcome, and we appreciate you and your roles and your leadership and everything you do. Father Flager, you the bomb. Love you madly. Thank you for being here to support this awesome female leader, and I appreciate all three of you all being here to support her today on her very big, big day. This is an awesome day. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Harris. The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Thank you, Madam President, and indeed, the chamber is honored today with such an array of distinguished visitors, and this speaks very highly, does it not, of the respect that the new Commissioner has, not only in the city of Chicago, but beyond. And her presence and her life story, as was alluded to by Alderman Austin, reminds me of the words of Adam Lindsey Graham. He was a policeman, a politician, and a poet. And in the middle of the 19th century, he wrote these words. The presence of Father Flager and the new Commissioner today, I think, remind me of those words. Graham said that most of life is froth and bubble. Two things stand like stone: kindness in another's troubles, and courage in your own. Those are words, I think, that the Commissioner has lived by, and certainly they're words that our friend, Father Flager, has lived by in his own Galgatha over these past months. I know that the prayers of all Chicagoans will be with you, Commissioner, and may God bless all the brave women and men of the Department of Fire that we're so indebted to day in and day out. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
You, Madam President. I stand to applaud you in nominating Ms. Holt to run the most respected organization in the city of Chicago. Nobody has a bad word for the Fire Department, because they show up, they save you, and they're arrived quickly. In working with Ms. Holt, we agreed to, one, try and get the number of fire deaths down as low as possible. As many of you all know, our congressional had the worst or one of these most horrific years for fire deaths in this city. And we've agreed to work, not only with respect to smoke detectors, but to leverage our influence to get others to donate carbon monoxide detectors to the people of the city of Chicago, and particularly our congressional, to help. And so I want to applaud you for your advocacy and working with them. And then, as a lighter note, obviously, with respect to Congressman Kelly and Senator Collins, I want to thank you for having them there. But the most important person here also, that you brought in that delegation, is Father Flager, who is here to perform an exorcism in this chamber today.
All rise.
So thank you, Madam President.
The Chair recognizes, oh, he's not...the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Hadden.
Thank you to my distinguished colleague for that. Just from the 49th Ward, we greatly appreciate your service, Commissioner. I stand in support. Mayor, this is a fantastic appointment. Thank you for all you do for our city. So both as Alderwoman of the 49th Ward, and also as a resident of the city of Chicago, I commend you. Thank you, and I look forward to your continued service for our city.
Thank you, Alderman Hadden. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm interested in this South Side delegation that we have, but let's remember, all good things come from the West Side of Chicago. And our Commissioner is from the West Side of Chicago, let's not forget that, from North Landale, a community that my parents and many Black Chicagoans grew up in. But again, I think that this appointment speaks to the credibility and the great work that you have done through the years, being a member of the Chicago Fire Department. I can remember when you and the former Commissioner Ford spoke to my family after the death of my cousin, Nathaniel Irvin, the firefighter who passed in California. And I truly remember the camaraderie and the, what you all did to help my cousin's wife and family through that time, and I will never forget that. And it also speaks to the character that not only you, but the department has. And we're glad to see that you, as the leader of this department, making history today. We appreciate everything that you've done, and we thank the mayor for thinking of you and such a like to give you this great opportunity, and for you to hope and do our community well. So we're proud of you, and congratulations for all that you've done, and we look for great things for you further. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Irvin. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you so much, Chair. Commissioner, very happy and proud to rise in support of your nomination before us today. Certainly, you have an esteemed department. Every Chicagoan is grateful for their work. I hope this is less a bad than a truthful word, but you probably know, today we're considering a $1.8 million settlement related to claims of sexual harassment towards women within your department. It's a sad thing. I know that these are legally allegations, but some of the allegations were truly disturbing to those of us who heard them. And from what we see from the Inspector General's report, these may represent the experiences many women are having within the department. I have full confidence and trust that you see in your role a mandate to move the culture of your department, to make sure every woman serving feels welcome and included and safe. And from everything that we've heard, you are fully up to that challenge. So thank you so much for taking on this responsibility.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Appointment, Commissioner, it's not lost upon any of us, the importance of what you represent coming into this position. I also am very proud to know that you're originally from North Landale, given that I have lived my whole life in South Landale, in Little Village, and we are one Landale, and we are one city of Chicago. And you being in this position moves us closer to that one Chicago. I think my colleague, Alderperson Laspada, said it well. We have confidence that you will help push the department in an even more just direction, in a more inclusive direction. I think your appointment speaks volumes to that, and I look forward to a healthy and productive partnership, particularly from the residents of the 22nd Ward. We congratulate you and look forward to our partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, Commissioner. It is my pleasure to stand and rise in support of your appointment. So everyone can take a deep breath now. But I want to say that you and your department have been there when my communities have needed you the most. You specifically have been on the street with us as we've dealt with some of the worst times in people's lives. And I know that that is something that is not necessarily just trained in you, but it is something that is born in you. It is something that is nurtured in your family, in your life experiences, and it's something that emulates out of you every single day. I know that you will be the catalyst for this department, that you will expand its reach, and you will show Chicago its true heroes once again. And I look forward to watching your progress, and I will say this again, as I said during committee, that I hope that you also work, and I hope that the administration... committee, that I hope that you also work, and I hope that the administration works with you, to end the automatic retirement that forces out so many able-bodied, skilled leaders from our department. We would hate to lose you at an age when I know you can still be a great leader in this department. So hopefully that is something that we can collectively work on as you continue down this path. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. The Chair recognizes Alderman King. Can you make sure that Alderwoman King's microphone is on, please? One second.
Can you hear me? Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner, I too rise in favor of this appointment. As a mother, as an African American, as a woman, you have faced many challenges to get to where you are. It doesn't go unnoticed. I think more importantly, it's important to acknowledge that you're taking all of those challenges that you've learned and are still willing to help others to rise as you have risen, and I appreciate that as well. I see you also brought Black up, just in case, Congressman Kelly, Senator Collins, and Father Flager, in case you need it. Good crew, so you might need it, but welcome, Commissioner. Appreciate being of service to you as well on behalf of the 4th Ward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman King. The Chair recognizes Chairman Rivoios.
Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner Holt, you bring out the best in this group that's here today. Look at this, all this love and hugs that we're giving you. This is good. We're moving forward because of you, your appointment. And I thank Madam President for this appointment because you're not only a lady in the department, but you are well-qualified. But it takes a lot of leaders that you have there to make you look good, and you have it. Utilize them, use them to the best of what you do in the city of Chicago, what you've done for many years. But I appreciate that you're there. I know you're going to work to get this diversity thing going, get it fixed. It's going to take a little while, but if we can't do it, look at that, look at, look at the heavyweights you got there. They're ready to go at it. But, but I thank you for being here today, and I support this appointment. Thank you.
Any other members who wish to speak? The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this. Commissioner, you are now in charge of the greatest Fire Department in the entire country, if not the world. God speed. We are here to help you. We're help you to, we're here to help move it along, strengthen the department, and know that we've always got your back. Please, 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 whatever you could do, bring up the morale. I know you're just, you're the right person to do it, and we're proud of you. God bless. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Napolitano. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Coleman.
Thank you, Madam President, and to our Commissioner. On behalf of the 16th Ward and Engine 116 over on 59th and Ashland, one of your busiest engines I hear in the city of Chicago, I'd like to thank you in advance. As a Black girl, you are the epitome of magic, especially up there with Congresswoman, Chairwoman Robin Kelly, and Senator Collins, and these beautiful women doing their fight with the Moms and the Bishop of 79th Street over there. You've got a strong crew, but you are breaking ceilings so that other little Black and Brown girls and boys will know that you can be born in North Landale, serve the entire city of Chicago, and still hold the position, and the sky is the limit. When I think of women like yourself and Dr. Janice Jackson and so many others in positions, Mayor Lightfoot, and just strong women, thank you for breaking those barriers, fighting through those ceilings, because I'm sure the road ahead will be rough. The going may be tough, but we are supporting you. We're praying with and for you, and congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you, Alderman Coleman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam President. I do also support your nomination and appointment as the next Commissioner for the Fire Department, and most especially because you took the time to come to this beautiful Puerto Rican parade that we had this past Saturday. And I hope that you can come back again so that we can have some Al Capurias and some of the foot trucks inside the park. Thank you.
Maldonado. Any others who wish to speak? Commissioner, we had long conversations about who you are, your background, your family. I think the fact that you, I'll come to you as a poll. Are you wishing to speak, sir? Okay. Been a long conversation about your background, your family, and how much you learned from your parents and their sacrifice. Having a grocery store on the West Side and moving to the South Side and tending to the needs of a community that were desperate for exactly the kind of resources that your family provided to them. I think you've had literally every supervisory role within a department. You have a true heart for the people there. Yes, of course, there are challenges, challenges that some that we can address, some that we need help from the state legislature, particularly regarding salary compression. But I know with you at the helm and our partnership together, we will get that done and bring and restore the Fire Department. And it is correct, as others have noted, you come with a village, a village of people who know you, who love you, who respect you. I want to welcome Father Flager to City Council. Great to see you again and have you back. What you do for your community, what you do for the entire city is really without peer, and we are happy that you are back, where you have created a real legacy of love and support in the Auburn-Gingerson community, and God bless our city to have you in our presence. I want to welcome Senator Collins to Chicago City Council. Just when you were missing Springfield, here we are again. And I want to also call out my friend and colleague, Congresswoman Robin Kelly, who has such a heart for justice and for making sure that residents all over her district and all over our city are safe. I want to thank you for your leadership in the Congress, and I'll invite you to come back if you think the Congress is a little crazy and no spirits of bipartisanship. Just come back to the City Council, and your spirit about, about the virtues of Congress might be renewed. But Commissioner, tough road ahead, but I am glad that you are at the helm. I know that you have the confidence of your exempt staff, that you will be a great leader, not just a historic leader, as the first woman ever Fire Commissioner. It's a great thing, but in 2021, it's way past time. So I look forward to working with you. As you know, I'm here. My entire team stands in support of you in the Fire Department. As has been said by many, the Fire Department has been here for us on our worst days, on our toughest days. The things that they did through the pandemic to help residents of the city will never be forgotten, but always be appreciated. So thank you and welcome. I refer back to Chairman Taliaferro.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd just like to say, Commissioner, we've had an opportunity to speak. You have my complete support, and I look forward to working with you. That also, as my colleagues have stated, would like to welcome our distinguished guest. Madam President, if there are no objections, I move for the passage of this item by the same roll call vote that was used to determine a quorum.
The Chair recognizes Alderman.
Madam President, Madam President, just so we are correct with our rules of order, I would like for Alderman Spazato to withdraw his motion to resource or adjourn before this motion takes place, just so we are decent and in order.
I think we can get to that, but I think we are in order, and I've recognized, Chairman Taliaferro, I will get to that, sir. Chairman Taliaferro has a motion.
Madam President, I renew my motion for the passage of this item by the same roll call vote that was used to determine a quorum.
Hearing no objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam President. That does conclude my report.
Commissioner, welcome. Recognizes Alderman Spazato.
Thank you, Madam President. I was trying to get your attention a little earlier, but I would like to withdraw my motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Alderman Spazato. We will now turn to the regular order of business. Next up is resolutions. We have one resolution. We have a resolution honoring Bernie Wong, who was an icon for our city and an activist. We will forego a reading of the formal resolution, but we have here with us today her members of her family, including her daughter. Are there members that wish to speak to the resolution?
Immediately consider the resolution.
Hearing no objection, so ordered. Are there members that wish to speak to the resolution? The Chair recognizes Alderman Carlos Ramirez-Rosa.
Madam Chair, I rise to be associated with this resolution and to remember the memory of Bernie. You know, I worked briefly at the Illinois Coalition for Immigrant and Refugee Rights as a deportation defense worker. And anytime that she visited the office, it was such a joy, because you knew that a individual who had been organizing for justice, you knew someone that had that gravitas, a leader, a respected member of her community, someone who you wanted to follow into battle as we fought for justice for Chicago's immigrant families. It was such a joy to be able to work with her in the minor capacity that I was able to. I know that she will be missed by so many in the Chinese-American community, in the Chicago community, in the immigrant community, particularly in this moment in time where we've seen an increase in Asian hate, in hate crimes targeting our Asian-American sisters and brothers. Her memory, her work is more important than ever. So I want to send my greetings and my deepest condolences to the family. Thank you for sharing her with Chicago. Thank you for sharing her and supporting her in this fight for justice. Her memory continues on. Her struggle, her fight continues on. We remember her today in this Chicago City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Thompson.
Thank you, Madam President. I too rise in support of this resolution for a truly wonderful woman. To her family, you know how terrific she was. She's now joined her husband Albert, but has left a great legacy to all of you, to her daughter and grandsons, to her family. Bernie was not only a leader in the Chinese community, but as just mentioned, she was a true leader in the immigrant community, immigration issues, and also as a constituent of mine and a friend of mine, she also pushed us to make sure that we were doing all we could for our constituents. As a founder of the Chinese-American Service League, Castle is a, a, an example that's used throughout the United States on how we can help immigrants and how we can help those that really need that helping hand as they come in to start a new life here in America. And I appreciate all of the counsel and advice that she gave me, and she was never afraid to ask for assistance, not for herself, but, but for others. It was always asking predominantly funding from the government to help with Castle to promote the Chinese community, to promote helping others in different classes and programs that, that they offered. And even in her retirement, she continued, I would often hear from her, and I was very fortunate to call her my friend. And so I do stand with the mayor on this resolution in honoring a truly wonderful Chicagoan who has a great story and a legacy here in Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Madam President, to this family, know that I am continuing to keep you all in my prayers. I had the opportunity to first work with Bernie when I was at the Board of Review of Tax Appeals, and she constantly helped us set up meetings in Chinatown. And but then as I got to know her and watch her, this is what I'm most excited about. If that was an injustice, I don't care who you were, she fought and she spoke out against that. And that's what I love the most. As someone mentioned about the hate that's going on against Asians in our community, I had posted something on Facebook about it, and somebody responded, why are you protecting people that normally don't stand up for us? I said, I knew someone that did, and that was Bernie. I'm almost about to cry because that's the type of person she was. And when you, everybody may not see it, but my pastor usually say, you don't do anything to be seen, but you should be seen doing the right thing. And Bernie was seen doing the right thing, and she has that within her family. I appreciate you all so much. Thank you all so much for sharing her with us. God bless.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sixchow Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to the family of Bernie, or not only our condolences, but I want to, I want to speak candidly about what she meant for our community. I have the honor and privilege to have worked as Alderman of the Chinatown community, Alderperson. And the tremendous dedication that Bernie showed in our community, not only for the immigrant community in Chinatown, but beyond, to fight for the city that we all deserve. Her commitment to social justice, her commitment to the values and principles, to have a city that welcomes everyone, that humanizes everyone. I was extremely honored to work closely with her during the most critical times in this pandemic, when the Chinatown community, when the Asian-American community needed the most. We saw a leader that showed dedication, that showed compassion, that showed us the spirit of our community. Bernie had some issues, health issues, for quite some time, but I tell you that I have never seen such resiliency despite her health issues. She took charge and led efforts to our vulnerable communities, immigrant communities who have been marginalized, who have been neglected for so long, not only were being brought together, but led efforts to lead in our communities during very difficult times. Bernie not only spoke in our meetings about the importance to condemn hate crimes in the Asian community, but took action legislatively to make sure that at the state and the city and every level of government, we act on it. Bernie also led efforts to make sure that we raise emergency funds for undocumented communities who were in so much pain. Bernie was there in every meeting despite the issues that she had with health. Talk about seniors and vaccination. Bernie wanted to make sure that every Castle senior, every senior in our community was able to access vaccination, even when they had to be done on-site despite the challenges. She saved lives. The dedication to make sure that Black and Brown communities also receive PPE and masks and show the compassion, to show the character of the Asian community or Chinatown community, who led efforts to show the city what we can do, what we can do together. I'm extremely proud and honored to have met Bernie and the legacy that lives on in what she built in Castle, that she built in Chinatown, and what she built, the spirit that she built in our city lives on. I was so honored to have celebrated Martin Luther King Day with her and her coalition of leaders to talk about violence, to talk about the racial disparities. Bernie was there. When I saw a picture of Howard Washington with her in her funeral... I saw a picture of Harold Washington with her in her funeral, it was a call for us to know and remember Bernie and her legacy of the city that we can be. To the family, thank you for sharing it with us. It was an honor and pleasure to work with her. Her spirit lives on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I too stand to be associated with this resolution. To the Wong family, my condolences and condolences on the part of the residents of the 3rd Ward. When I think of Bernie, I know of her commitment to the Chinatown community, someone who was a dynamo during the 80s and the Harold Washington years. That's when I first began to hear of her name, and to also know that she was a delegate agency or the Chinese-American Service League was a delegate agency to the city, which she grew to be a large organization within the Chinatown community. I just wanted to acknowledge her accomplishments and achievements and contributions to the city of Chicago and to say that we are sorry for your loss. God bless you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Dow. Others who wish to speak. Chair recognizes Alderman Burke.
Madam President and ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen, before discussion continues.
I'm pleased to be able to join this morning in saying a word or two on this resolution. This morning, I had the opportunity to chat for a few moments with Bernie's daughter. And I reminisced a little bit with her about the great experience that Ann and I had a number of years ago, when we joined with Bernie and Albert on the inaugural fright from Chicago to Beijing. What a great experience that was. We dined on the Great Wall of China, and we had the opportunity to meet with government officials. And I told Bernie's daughter that, at this time, it was actually during the crisis when the American plane was brought down by the Chinese planes, and they were quarantined on an island. And so the shopping area in Beijing was located near the American Embassy, and the government was organizing demonstrations around the American Embassy. And so they called together all the ladies that were on the trip, Bernie and Ann and Sharon. And they said, "You can't go over to the shopping area because there's going to be demonstrations." Well, that lasted about 24 hours. And the ladies made a beeline over there, and it was a great experience for them and a great sight to see. But, you know, Madam President, as you know, and the other lawyers here today know, there's a term in the law, it's a Latin term, sui generis, and the definition is one of a kind. Bernie was sui generis, one of a kind. And may she rest in peace. The world is a better place for having known Bernie and Albert. God bless.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Alderman Burke. Others who wish to speak. Alderman Burnett.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I'd like to rise in support of this resolution. She's a great lady. I was just telling her daughter, myself and several of us Aldermen had the opportunity to go to China, and she was very instrumental in orchestrating that. And you can tell when you came in the room with her, she was the boss. And I was telling her daughter, she reminded me of my African-American mother. She just was telling everybody what to do. "You put that down there. No, you move that up. No, get me that. Go over there." She was just running the whole show. She was so loved by everyone in her community. She made things happen in her neighborhood. She looked out for her people. She filled in the gap between her community, City Hall, the state, and the nation. She was a great lady. She's truly going to be missed. She had a lot of contacts in China, which, you know, was evident with the things that happened in Chinatown. You all should be proud. I see her grandkids there. She left you all a great legacy. And I'm sure she will be telling you all, "Don't sit down, get up, do something, and help people in your neighborhood." God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Burnett. I also stand with the entire body of this council to speak to this resolution. We are here in this moment because the Lord called our sister Bernie home way too soon. Through decades of activism and community service, Bernie Wong lays the trail of success and opportunity for countless others who came to the U.S. in search of a better life, just like she did. You think about it, at age 18, Bernie left Hong Kong by herself to earn a BA in sociology from Briar Cliff College and a master's degree in social work from Washington University. That in and of itself really defines Bernie's spirit: fearless, determined. Bernie also created, as we've heard, the Chinese-American Service League, or Castle, in 1978 to serve as a vital social safety network for our city's Chinese community. Bernie would grow the organization from a small shop with an annual budget of about $30,000 into the fully fledged team with an annual budget of $13 million that it is today. In addition to founding Castle, Bernie also held a number of other leadership positions, serving as chair of the Chicago Mayor's Advisory Council on Asian Affairs, the Chicago Commission on Human Relations, and a governor's Asian Advisory Council. She was also the first Asian person to be appointed to the boards of the United Way of Greater Chicago and the Chicago Public Library. Even during her retirement, she made sure to make sure her verse was heard by leaders, including former President Obama, where she served on the Obama Foundation Inclusion Council. I had the great honor of speaking at Bernie's funeral. And I reached out to her friends and loved ones to make sure that I was understanding and really communicating the essence of who she was. And one thing that I heard, which I think really is a testament to Bernie Wong, but also something that we need here now, truly in this moment, as she was nearing death, Bernie was still thinking about the city. And she said that she hoped that, as she passed on from this life to the nest, that this city, people in this city, would come to love each other more deeply than they are now. So Bernie's aspiration for us, for us to come together and be united, even in our differences, that's a lesson that we should all take to heart. I know that her passing has been extraordinarily difficult. There were so many who spoke eloquently at our funeral about what she meant to them, but I hope, as you've heard here today, her legacy will never die. Her legacy is in all of us and all of you, and her great works that will continue on for years and years to come. The chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Madam President, I request adoption of the resolution by a rising vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand.
Madam President, I now move to return to the regular order of business.
Thank you, Alderman Mitchell. The chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've provided an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting of the City Council. Madam President, would you please have the clerk to read the ordinance?
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Section 1, because an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to COVID-19, the next regular meeting of the City Council in accordance with applicable law shall be conducted by video conference on Friday, June 25, 2021, beginning at 1:00 p.m., and shall provide for remote participation and remote viewing by members of the public. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Michelle Harris, 8th Ward.
Chair recognizes Alderman Harris. The chair recognizes Alderman Harris, and then I will recognize you, Alderman Bill.
There being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn by the affirmative vote of all the members present for the roll call to determine form.
The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, we cannot adjourn this meeting because according to our rules of order, according to our rules and regulations, there were several Rule 41s that were posted that have to be addressed at this meeting. According to our rules, they have to be addressed at the next meeting. There were two Rule 41s that have to be addressed before we adjourn this meeting.
Alderman Beal, I think you're incorrect pursuant to Rule 21. This motion is germane at any time. I'm going to rule you out of order. The chair has ruled. The chair recognizes Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman. Sir, the chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
And there being no further business before the body, I move that we adjourn by the affirmative vote of all members present for the roll call to determine form.
I think we've got to take this step by step. Is your motion to seek approval of the ordinance to set the City Council meeting for Friday?
Yes.
That is the pending motion. I asked for clarification, and I... Alderman Burke?
Unless I've missed something, the Alderman of the 8th Ward, the chairman of the Rules Committee, made a motion to adjourn. Alderman Beal made a motion to lay on the table. That is the motion that takes precedence, and it is not debatable.
One moment. Her motion to adjourn was premature. She's now moved to adopt the ordinance setting the new date and time for the next City Council meeting. The motion was premature. I asked for clarification from the Rules Committee Chair. She's clarified that. Your motion to, your appeal, is denied. Standing up and yelling without seeking recognition is not something that's appropriate. I have ruled, you appealed the rule, the order, the ruling. I have considered your appeal, and I've denied it. We are going to, we're going to, we're going to Alderman Harris. The chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
Madam President, are we going to, are we going back to my original motion?
Yes, your original motion, which is to...
To set the date and time?
That's correct.
That is the meeting.
That's the motion that is pending, and we'll have a roll call on that. Madam Clerk.
Are we having a roll call on?
The ordinance to set the new date and time of the meeting.
Is that what?
Just the date and time? We're not adjourned in the meeting?
We're not there yet, Alderman Beal. I've already said that.
Well, I can't tell. One minute we're there, one minute we ain't.
So we're having a...
Right now, is the motion on the floor.
Clarification, are we having a roll call to establish that we're doing the date and the time of the meeting?
That's correct. So the motion that you'll be voting on, ladies and gentlemen, is a motion to set the new date and time of the meeting for Friday at 1:00 p.m. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Laspata. Alderman Laspata.
The motion simply to set the date and time, correct? Yes.
Yes. Alderman Hopkins.
I vote aye.
Alderman Hopkins votes aye. Alderman Dow.
Aye.
Alderman King. Alderman King. Date and time of the meeting on Friday, 1 o'clock. Come back to me. I can't skip. If you're in your, the rules, if you're in the seat, I have to take the roll call.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're in the middle of a roll call. Madam Clerk, please...
Alderman King. Clarification.
Does this mean if you vote for this, that if we vote to adjourn, that that would supersede it?
This is just to vote on the time and place of the date of the meeting, Friday at 1.
The adjournment is not before the body. The only motion that's before the body right now is setting a new date and time for the City Council meeting. So please, let's proceed, Madam Clerk.
Alderman King? No? Okay. Alderman Harrison?
No.
Alderman Sawyer? Alderman Sawyer?
No.
Alderman Mitchell?
Aye.
Alderman Harris?
Aye.
Alderman Beal?
Nope.
Alderman Zalaski Garza?
Aye.
Alderman Thompson? Alderman Cardness?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn? Alderman Burke?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Coleman? Alderman Moore? Alderman Curtis? Oh, Alderman Curtis, I don't think he's here. Alderman O'Shea? Oh, Alderman Curtis, are you here? Okay, Alderman O'Shea? Alderman Taylor? Alderman Brookins? Alderman Rodriguez? Alderman Tabarez? Alderman Scott? Alderman Sichul Lopez? Alderman Maldonado? Alderman Burnett?
Aye.
Alderman Irvin?
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro?
Aye.
Alderman Revoyes?
Aye.
Alderman Cardona? Alderman Wagaspak?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez? Alderman Austin? Alderman Ramirez Rosa? Alderman Biegus? Alderman Mits? Alderman Spazado?
Spazado's an aye.
Alderman Nugent? Alderman Vasquez? Alderman Napolitano?
Aye.
Alderman Riley?
Aye.
Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Tunny?
Aye.
Alderman Gardner?
No.
Alderman Kappelman?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Osterman?
Aye.
Alderman Haddon?
No.
Alderman Silverstein? 3118.
There are 31 yays, there are 18 nays. The motion passes. Yes.
Madam President, I move that we reconsider that last vote.
All those in favor of the motion for reconsideration signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, the motion for reconsideration fails. Alderman Beal? The chair recognizes Alderman Harris.
My motion is to adjourn this meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Alderman? Did you call?
A motion to adjourn takes precedence over a motion to lay on the table. The motion that's on the floor... Gentlemen. Pursuant to Rule 21, the motion to adjourn takes precedence over a motion to lay on the table. There's a pending motion to adjourn. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Lasfara?
No.
Alderman Lasfara? Alderman Lasfara?
No.
No, okay, thank you. Please speak up, I cannot hear you. Hopkins?
Aye.
Alderman Hopkins? Aye. Alderman Dow?
Aye.
Aye, Alderman Dow's an aye. Alderman King? Alderman King is a no. Alderman Hairston?
No.
Alderman Hairston is a no. Alderman Sawyer?
No.
Alderman Sawyer is a no. Alderman Mitchell? Alderman Mitchell?
Aye.
Alderman Mitchell is an aye. Alderman Harris?
Aye.
Alderman Harris is an aye. Alderman Beal?
No.
Alderman Beal is a no. Alderman Zalavsky Garza?
Aye.
Alderman Zalavsky Garza's an aye. Alderman Thompson?
Aye.
Alderman Thompson is an aye. Alderman Cardness? Alderman Cardness? Alderman Cardness is an aye. Alderman Quinn?
Aye.
Alderman Quinn is an aye. Alderman Burke?
No.
Alderman Burke is a no. Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Lopez is a no. Alderman Coleman? Alderman Coleman? No. Alderman Coleman is a no. Alderman Moore?
No.
Alderman Moore is a no. Alderman Curtis? Alderman Curtis not here. Alderman O'Shea?
Yes.
Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Taylor? Alderman Taylor is a no. Alderman Brookins?
Aye.
Alderman Brookins is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez?
No.
Alderman Rodriguez is a no. Alderman Tabarez? Tabarez is an aye. Alderman Scott?
Aye.
Alderman Scott is an aye. Alderman Sichu Lopez?
No.
Alderman Sichu Lopez is a no. Alderman Maldonado?
Nope.
Maldonado is a no. Alderman Burnett?
Aye.
Alderman Burnett is an aye. Alderman Irvin? Alderman Irvin is an aye. Alderman Talafaro?
Aye.
Alderman Talafaro is an aye. Alderman Revoyas?
Aye.
Alderman Revoyas is an aye. Alderman Cardona? Alderman Cardona is a no. Alderman Wagaspac?
Aye.
Alderman Wagaspac is an aye. Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez? Alderman Rodriguez Sanchez is a no. Alderman Austin?
Aye.
Alderman Austin is an aye. Alderman Ramirez Rosa?
No.
Alderman Ramirez Rosa, they know. Alderman Vegas? Alderman Vegas, they know. Alderman Mits?
Aye.
Alderman Mits is an aye. Alderman Spassato? Alderman Spassato is an aye. Alderman Nugent?
Aye.
Alderman Nugent is an aye. Alderman Vasquez?
No.
Alderman Vasquez, they know. Alderman Napolitano? Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Riley?
Aye.
Alderman Riley is an aye. Alderman Smith?
Aye.
Alderman Smith is an aye. Alderman Tunny?
Aye.
Alderman Tunny is an aye. Alderman Gardner?
No.
Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderman Kappelman?
Aye.
Alderman Kappelman is an aye. Alderman Martin?
No.
Alderman Martin is a no. Alderman Osterman?
Aye.
Osterman is an aye. Alderman Haddon? Alderman Haddon's a no. Alderman Silverstein?
Aye.
Alderman Silverstein is an aye. 2722.
The vote is 2722. The ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned.